So hello everybody and welcome to study session number two. Uh, as always, I am Josh, one of the moderators here at the Heimler's History Discord server. Uh, if you were not here for our session last night, I've been doing these study sessions for about three years now. Uh, graduated high school last year, took all the AP history exams, got a five on all of them. So, um, you know, I kind, I, I dare to say I do know what I'm doing here, uh, but I'm here to impart, uh, my knowledge and understanding of history to you guys. With me as always is, uh, Styles, if you want to introduce yourself.
Yeah, what's up? I'm Styles. Um, like Josh, I've taken like all the, like pretty much like all the history courses except for AP Euro. Uh, Harry is, Harry is notorious for that. Um, so he's the AP Euro expert, but for everything else, you know, AP Gov, uh, AP US history and AP World, yep. Um, I've, I've taken all those courses. So yeah, I'm here to help.
Yeah, I guess introduce myself real quick. I can't make it because I'm volunteering for a few hours, but um, I'm Harry. Uh, I was, I started touring last year and uh, if you need anything help on Euro, A Push or AP World sort of, uh, I'm here. Uh, you can check out the events or the schedule in study sessions for the long and rigorous study sessions. So, that's just my introduction. So good luck to you guys. You guys are in good hands with Josh and Styles.
Yep. And both Harry and Styles are course consultants, so they have been hand selected for being knowledgeable in the various AP histories. So you're, you're in good hands with us this evening. Uh, we're going to be doing two more of these as we approach, uh, the exams. So lots of opportunities to ask questions, get answers, do all that good stuff. With that being said, uh, if you do have content questions regarding AP World or AP European history, go ahead and drop those in the chat, uh, located in the upper right-hand corner and we'll get underway here. Uh, if you have any questions regarding AP Gov or AP US history, those will be, uh, for our other set of study sessions. Uh, the next one's going to be on, uh, well, actually you can check the study session schedule. That's going to be the next, uh, odd numbered study session. That's going to be for, uh, A Push and, uh, AP Gov. Uh, today we are doing mainly AP World and AP Euro as well as, um, any questions regarding how to do exams. We'll save those towards the end in regards to how to best approach questions, how to answer different styles of questions. What, um, and all that being said, with that, we already have our first question here. What happened to China? Uh, both politically and economically after the Opium Wars? Styles, you want to take that?
Yeah, for sure. Uh, so as you know, China, um, was a big proponent of, uh, trade in the area. Uh, unfortunately, uh, for the country, uh, during that time is that, uh, when, uh, Great Britain started trading with them, uh, they were hooked on opium, um, a drug, uh, that pretty much like killed a lot of the Chinese people during that era. Um, so the main thing you gotta know is that overall, uh, the Opium Wars, which were the conflicts like during the, um, the early to mid, uh, 19th century. So then about 1860, you could say, um, you just gotta make sure that you, uh, remember that they stopped the trafficking of opium and that they cut pretty much ties with Great, Great Britain at that point, um, because they were trading opium and killing the people. So they, I think it's, I believe they dumped, uh, the opium in, into the ocean. They pretty much just, you know, said, Britain, we're not going to trade with you. Your resources are literally killing our people and that's pretty much it.
Yep, there you go. And then that's also end up later on getting the spheres of influence and all that. Uh, but that's again, later on in history. Um, explain the economic globalization aspects of unit nine. That would be world history? I believe, Styles. Is, is that world or Euro?
Yeah. So that'd be more of the, uh, the world history. Uh, that'd be probably the, uh, the decolonization period of the, and the, uh, the global, sorry, decolonization is unit eight, globalization is unit nine. So that now we're in a more like interconnected, uh, period. Um, we're kind of talking about, you know, post, post, um, post, uh, 1900s. So we're talking about, you know, uh, world wars is mentioned, uh, but we're also talking about, you know, how, you know, technology and information have, you know, like pretty much like connected every, you know, state and nation together. Um, it's overall not, not as important as the other eight units, but it is sometimes mentioned in the exam. Uh, so my recommendation is, is probably like maybe skipping that over, maybe watching a bit of Heimler videos and then that's kind of it.
Yep. And again, for these exams, uh, for the most part, the shoulder units, as I call them. So typically units one and two and eight, nine are typically not as, um, tested upon as much as, you know, kind of the, the middle units. So units, uh, three, four, five, six, usually seven as well. Those are kind of going to be the bulk units that you're going to want to mainly focus on, mainly study. Obviously it's good to know a bit about all the units that are going on, but if you are short on time or you know, you're, you're only really good with only remembering a few key aspects, key things. I definitely make sure you focus on those middle sets of units, just so that you have as good a chance to answer all the questions as possible. For the most part, all the questions are going to revolve around those units because AP realizes that those are the units that are covered most often in classrooms that most teachers spend most of their time on. So again, that's kind of just for most of your AP classes, whatever's in like the middle units, that's what I would spend most of your time on. Obviously still good to know what's going on, um, the, the edge units, but don't necessarily feel that you have to fully grasp or fully understand everything that's going on in those units. Uh, why was Germany blamed for World War One? So there's a couple of main, uh, different theories for that. Um, but kind of the main reason why they were blamed is they did provide a lot of economic and military support to, uh, Serbia and to, or sorry, not Serbia, to the, um, uh, Austria-Hungarian Empire and supporting the, uh, powers who were going against the Allies. So that was one main reason for it. Um, obviously Germany was not included in the negotiations, so it was easier for the, uh, allied powers to say, oh, well, it's obviously Germany's fault. Um, these powers also sustained a lot of damage from the, uh, German military. And so therefore they just saw like, oh yes, it was the Germans who caused this war. It's all the Germans' fault. Germany has to pay for it. Um, and because of their approach of, well, you know, they harmed us and now we need to harm them. They need to pay back all these damages that they made in our places. Uh, you get the thing where Germany not only has to rebuild their country, but they also have to pay to rebuild every other country that, uh, they damaged during the war, which, uh, creates a economic collapse in the country, uh, which is not at all helped by the Great Depression where the mark basically becomes useless. And then you get a little guy named Adolf Hitler who comes to power with the promise of restoring German glory and saying, you know, hey, this entire, the entire world is against us. They're trying to destroy the German people, but we're stronger than that. We're going to show them that we can make it out of this and that we are stronger than what the world makes us out to be. And that's how you get the rise of the Nazi party in Germany. But yeah, the short and sweet version is because the German, uh, military was already a fairly strong military and because they provided a lot of economic support to the other powers fighting against the Allies, they were seen as an E, as the, the main reason to, uh, to put blame on for the war. Again, because they were so strong militar, militaristically, excuse me. Um, and then also, uh, because they did, you know, cause a lot of damage to these other countries. So these other countries were like, hey, this is Germany's fault. It's totally Germany. No other country, just Germany. Moving on here.
Yeah, I would say, sorry. I would say it's also good to note that, um, there was also another aspect as to why Germany was blamed for the war. So during the, uh, obviously this is the time of the Kaiser and the Iron Cross. Um, I would also, uh, keep in mind that Germany tried to bribe Mexico basically. So if you're not familiar with the Zimmerman Telegram, this telegram was sent to Mexico at the time when America and Mexico, you know, it was Pancho Villa and, um, you know, he would be raiding these trains and these, in these freighters and, you know, killing American citizens on these, on these trains. Um, pretty much he, he evaded us until like, you know, until like, you know, towards World War One. Um, when, uh, America started mechanizing its military, uh, weapons, including like, you know, cars, guns, tanks, that kind of stuff. Um, but the Zimmerman Telegram was Germany's way of basically saying, we're threatening you, United States, but we're also giving Mexico the opportunity. If they join us, they can take your land. So I would say that's also, you know, their, um, treachery, uh, when it came to that, uh, was also a, um, a, like a, not, not in the grand scheme of things for the war effort in Europe, but it was a grand scheme thing for, um, you know, threatening the United States in that sense.
And that's also part of the reason of how the US, uh, became involved, uh, in the war as well. Um, because of, again, of that Zimmerman Telegram and also, um,
Just thinking of Lusitania.
Thinking of Lusitania, yep, of German U-boats attacking, um, American, uh, passenger ships and cargo ships, um, as well, or let me rephrase, who were attacking them, uh, unprompted and just causing, uh, mass chaos and havoc. So that's how the US got involved because originally the US not want to be involved in World War One, but Germany kind of A-ing them on and saying, and, you know, having both the Zimmerman Telegram and attacking, uh, ships unprompted, uh, resulted in the US changing course and wanting to be involved. Um, let's see here. Next question. How did the French Revolution and Napoleon Bonaparte's rise to power impact the political and social system of Europe in the late 18th and early 19th centuries? Oh boy. Um, so the French Revol-, so I, I can take the, the French Revolution and Styles, if you want to take, uh, Napoleon after that. Uh, so with, um, the French Revolution, how that impacted political and social system is it kind of helped ignite the shift away from monarchical systems and more towards democratic systems. Obviously the French Revolution took inspiration from the American Revolution. Um, and they saw, you know, hey, if, uh, these ragtag bunch of people on the other side of the ocean can overthrow a oppressive monarchy, then we can do that here because the French were kind of sick and tired of, uh, having a monarchy that was disinterested in the benefit of the people. Um, so following the French Revolution is where you start seeing a kind of broader shift in Europe. Um, away from having a heavy influence on monarchy and more towards, uh, democratically elected society. Um, sometimes that leads to, you know, countries where there is democratically elected leader and then you also get, uh, sometimes more authoritarian leadership as well. But yeah, that was kind of, I guess, the broader political and social impact was the beginning of the shift away from the aristocracy and the hierarchy and the hierarchical powers having sway in government to shifting more towards the common person to a more egalitarian society where people regardless of social standing and economic background have a say in the government and how government works. Uh, Styles, if you want to go ahead and take how Napoleon's rise to power affected both, uh, political and social systems.
Yeah. So the main thing you gotta keep in mind is that after the French Revolution, so the main guy that was probably a proponent of the revolution first off was Maximilian de Rossweer. Um, unfortunately for him, he was actually killed by his own supporters, uh, because he, um, you know, the revolution pretty much just ate itself up. It pretty much just killed anybody who led in order to, um, kill off the aristocracy and to prevent anybody else from rising to power. Now, because Napoleon was a military man, they actually elected him to be, you know, sort of a consul at the time. So he, he got rid of the aristocracy altogether. Um, and it turned into sort of a militaristic where, um, militaristic slash personalistic regime, sort of. Um, he tried to make it democratic where he was, you know, he was, um, created a system of schools and colleges. Uh, he also introduced new civic codes, um, for France and he pretty much allowed, you know, a little more freedom, uh, than the monarchy did before him when, uh, Louis XVI was in power. Um, the downsides for his role was that, uh, he was very nationalistic, uh, and not in a good way at that. He, um, he attempted to expand his power, you know, towards, uh, the east, uh, especially near like Prussia and those areas. Um, he was knocked back once, uh, he was exiled, um, to the, I believe it was the Isle of Elba. Um, so pretty much like, you know, he was, he was exiled once. He can made a comeback at the Battle of Waterloo and then he was exiled again to St. Helena, which is like near South America for a final time before dying of a stomach ulcer. So that's kind of like the history of him. Um, another thing to keep in mind is that he was a hypocrite of his own word. Instead of making, uh, France a democracy, he actually crowned himself emperor, uh, turning it back into a monarchy. So pretty much he, um, overall, the three main points you gotta know is that he pretty much used his medical, uh, his military and political power to gain popularity. That popularity got him into a government position and he overthrew that government by, you know, crowning himself emperor. So that's kind of the main stuff.
Yep. Alrighty. Next question here. What are the spheres of influence? So the spheres of influence are kind of what they sound like. These were not quite spheres, but they were large, uh, tracts of land in China where a European power or the US, uh, had control and influence, uh, over trade in that particular region. Um, this was done, um, again, following, uh, the Opium Wars, uh, when these Western powers wanted to have access to Chinese markets, to, uh, Chinese labor and Chinese trade. They basically negotiated, uh, with the Chinese government to have these spheres where they could go in and basically have free rule, uh, for better or for worse. Now, obviously these are very much one-sided negotiations. Uh, these greatly benefited, uh, the Western powers while leaving China fairly helpless. So, um, it was again, a way for the, uh, for, for the Chinese to, uh, or sorry, for Western powers to benefit and to, um, basically get what they could from China with very little repercussions, not necessarily having to provide anything in return. Uh, in regards to Japan, Japan saw this and they basically shut themselves off completely from global trade because they saw all the negative impacts that were happening with the spheres of influence. Um, and so that kind of stays that way for many years until, um, geez, uh, Styles, what was the name of that, the, the general that, that forced the opening of Japanese ports? That was...
Wait, wow. What, what year are we talking about here?
When, uh, the, 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 the first time, when the, um, when the Japanese, uh, ports were be, Perry, that's what it was. It was Perry. Um, when, when Perry came through to force the ports to be open. Um, again, this is why we have the chat. It's great to, uh, have additional questions when we sometimes miss this, but, uh, yeah, so the reason why Japan kind of was closed for a while was because they saw what was happening in China with these Western powers coming in and basically having their way, uh, ruining the culture for the most part. So that's what, uh, that's what we had. But yeah, so basically long-winded way of saying that circles, that spheres of influence were basically kind of like mini little colonies for, for lack of a better term, uh, within China held by Western powers. Uh, let's see. What are the main points of laissez-faire economics at the beginning of the Industrial Revolution? Well, thankfully I'm an economics major, so fairly easy to answer that question, but laissez-faire economics is basically where the government's like, okay, we're doing nothing. We're letting people, uh, we're letting businesses do what they want to do. We're letting the economy regulate itself. We're doing absolutely nothing to stop that. Um, laissez-faire translates to French to literally, um, just let them literally to, you know, let it be, like do as they will. Um, and basically what it does is again, as I mentioned, the economy regulates itself. Businesses do what they want to do. Businesses are expected to provide certain services and certain things that, uh, in other forms of government, you would have the government that would provide. Um, and how that led to the Industrial Revolution is businesses were encouraged to compete with each other. They were encouraged to innovate, encouraged to, uh, make things as cheaply as possible. And so that's where you get the innovation of machi-, excuse me, machinery of factories and everything being built for, um, you know, as cheaply and as efficiently as possible. So that's great because things cost cheaper. You can make more of something for a lot less. But the converse of that is, uh, companies are encouraged to pay their workers as little as humanly possible. Um, and basically, you know, driving them until they cannot work anymore. So with that, you start getting the rise of, um, of temperance movements that are basically saying, you know, like, hey, like people are worker, people, workers are people too. And they need to make sure that they're able to, um, to, you know, have living wages, that they're able to live well. Yes, we have the rise of labor unions during that time period as well. So that's how you kind of start getting that shift, uh, at the turn of the 20th century to a, uh, society that kind of promotes workers right, promotes workers' rights. Um, and kind of the shift away from just, you know, toil, toil until you die. Um, but yeah, basically laissez-faire capitalism, uh, economy does what it wants, government does nothing. Let's see. Could you explain the rise of fascism and its effects? Oh boy, that is a doozy and a half. So fascism is basically the, um, belief that the, basically you do everything for the good of the country. It's like, it's an ultra-nationalistic view on things. It's like very right-wing, almost always with an authority or authoritarian leader. Um, and is in many ways associated with the rise of the nation-state where people associate themselves really strongly with the government and with the country. Um, this comes again mainly from European powers where you have the shift away from, you know, having kingdoms and, and royalty and, uh, all that stuff to more, in theory, democratically elected leaders, um, but in order to, you know, generally support, in order to establish legitimacy for these rulers. And a lot of times it makes sense to take a more militaristic approach, to take, you know, ah, yes, you know, the, the glory of the nation, the, uh, the benefit of making our country great and better than everyone else. Um, is kind of a byproduct of that thinking and of that time period. And so because of that, uh, you get leaders like Hitler, like Mussolini, like, um, 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 um,
Probably Suge Ikudzio.
Yeah, you get, you get Kojo and you also get, um, uh, Franco. I can't believe Franco's name. You also get Franco in, in Spain. Uh, you get those kinds of leaders who are initially elected, uh, because people, you know, rally around this idea of a strong country and of wanting, um, to have a strong national identity to rally around. Then these leaders take advantage of that and create a very militaristic, um, ideology in the country, really push the idea of you must do everything possible to benefit the nation. Um, and basically silence any opposition to go against them. Uh, and for some people, they rally around that, I think it's popular. And then for many people, it's absolutely terrible because they lose a lot of freedoms that they once had and basically have to give everything up in order to support the state. Um, so that's kind of how you get the rise of fascism is from the changing shift from, uh, monarchy to a more, uh, democratically elected nation-state. And that gets expanded during the world war periods when there's again, a stronger sense of national identity, wanting to support the state and making sure and, um, of kind of rallying around, uh, a national cause, having national unity in that way. Um, let's see. How did decolonization efforts vary in process? And how did the proxy war movement help to make notable differences besides essentially being communism versus capitalism? So it's a two-part question there. We'll start with, um, the decolonization efforts vary in process. So there were varying changes in decolonization. Uh, obviously there was some more, some more violent approaches to decolonization. So take the American Revolution, you can take the Haitian Revolution as well, where a group of people who felt oppressed, uh, rose up against their colonial holders and attempted to gain independence. And for the most part, this would work, not always, but sometimes would work. Um, and as, you know, time went on, more and more of these colonial nations felt, you know, like, hey, why do we need to be serving this colonial power that's thousands of miles away when we can perfectly run our government ourselves? When we can do things the way that we want to do and make sure that our own people are supported when this colonial power is doing basically nothing to help us out. Um, and you get a lot of countries wanting decolonization following, uh, the World War period. Um, and that's where we start seeing more pacifist, uh, decolonization. So you can take an India with Mahatma Gandhi, uh, leading peaceful protests against the British occupation and eventually getting decolonization. Was there no one that died during that time? No, there were people that died, but you know, it was less atrocious than a full-out war than having everybody fighting against each other. But it was still effective. It still resulted in, uh, India becoming a independent state. You also get in Africa, uh, many of the colonies become independent following World War Two because there's the shifting mindset of, you know, we fought in Europe for people to have freedoms, to have the ability to choose the way that they lead their lives and do what they want to do. And we should probably uphold those same principles, uh, for, for our colonies. And so that's where you start having countries willingly giving independence to their, to their former colonies. So that's kind of the progression of decolonization. I will let Styles take the next question on, uh, how the proxy war movement helps to, or sorry, um, how did the proxy war movement help to make notable differences besides essentially being communism versus, versus capitalism? So I guess kind of if you want to just explain Cold War proxy wars.
Alright, so yeah, during this time, um, in decolonization, so I'm, I think we're talking about like unit eight of, uh, world history or even some aspects of European history. Uh, the main things you gotta know is that, um, during the time of the Cold War, so US and Russia were the main superpowers at the time. Uh, they're, they have and they are still, um, two of the, two of the powers that have probably the largest nuclear arsenals. So like they were already, you know, amping up their, their, uh, nuclear weapons productions. They were already inventing new types of technology to threaten each other. Uh, but nobody actually drew any, um, drew any blood in this conflict, um, unless you count the proxy wars. Uh, the two main ones you have to keep in mind are the Vietnam and the Korean wars. Uh, the war in Korea came first, obviously. So that was with, uh, you know, the Viet Cong in the north and, uh, the people in South Korea. Um, pretty much like the war never really technically ended because there is a DMZ in the middle. Obviously you know that North Korea is one of the most isolated nations in the world, uh, run by a dictator named Kim Jong-un. The same family has been in power for over three generations, uh, ever since the war ended. Um, they're the most cut off from society. They're one of the most cut off, uh, states in society. Um, the other is Vietnam. Um, fortunately they were able to resolve their conflict with, um, oh, sorry, why did I mention the Viet Cong in, um, the Korean War? Sorry, the Viet Cong were in the Vietnam War. Sorry about that. Um, so in Korea, it was, it was, you know, North, North Korea and South Korea, obviously. Uh, the war never ended. You have the DMZ that's currently, uh, the main border. Uh, so technically the Korean War never ended. Uh, Vietnam War came later. Um, obviously that was like the late 60s or late 70s, um, to where, um, you know, the Viet Cong was the Communist Party, uh, that was in, that was, uh, militarized, uh, to fight the people in the south. Obviously the, uh, the, uh, the border between the two parts, obviously that dissolved after Vietnam became an independent nation. Uh, so those, those states in, in and of itself, like they, they were pretty much references to the ongoing spread of communism in both Russia and China. Um, so they were trying to make sure that communism did not spread to these, some of these decolonized states. So yeah, that's kind of it. And then concerning communists and capitalism, uh, ideally, so the differences between communism and capitalism stem from how economically they, um, you know, are I, uh, how economic, how economically their, um, their ideologies differ. Um, so for communism, uh, well, let's start with capitalism. So capitalism ideally, everybody competes for, for money. You have the opportunity in certain job sectors to make as much money as you can. There will be taxes sometimes maybe, but pretty much the government is kind of hands-off. It's pretty much the laissez-faire, um, equivalent. Like that, that is what laissez-faire stems from. Capitalism is pretty much where the government allows citizens to, to compete for money. Communism, on the other hand, is ideally kind of the opposite. Communism is on kind of like the left-wing side of things where it's basically saying, um, in terms of economics and in government, it is probably, um, uh, it, it's ideally where everybody gets an even share of, you know, the profit. Um, so everybody, no matter if you're a teacher or if you're a doctor, if you're a soldier, or if you're a, uh, post office worker, you get the same wage. Now unfortunately, two things are problematic. One, your doc, your job kind of means nothing um, in and of itself, because a doctor is going to make the same as a garbage truck driver. So that doesn't really make much sense, right? Um, the second thing is the people in power, if it's an oligarchy or totalitarian, um, or an authoritarian, uh, dictatorship, right? Those people usually concentrate wealth into a small, um, party of people. Uh, which is why, you know, the dictators in, in Russia, you know, if it's Stalin, Khrushchev or Gorbachev, you know, like they managed to get a hold of most of the profit in the country while the rest of people, you know, like, you know, people in other uh, areas, you know, they weren't getting as much and they were starving. And that's why communism ultimately failed. Um, there are still communist states. Obviously North Korea is one of them. Uh, Cuba is also the other notable one. Um, the main thing you gotta know is that communist states tend to not do so well on the economic side of things, which is why they tend to not, you know, be as plenty as the capitalist states.
Yep, there you go. Uh, if you want to go ahead and take, we do have a question on how the Medici family came to power in France and how that led to the Bartholomew Day massacre? Styles, if you want to take that one?
Okay. So here's the thing. I don't really know much about that. So sorry, what was the que- I'm not seeing it. Where is it?
Uh, what led to the, or sorry, how did the Medici family come to power in France and how did that then lead to the, uh, Bartholomew Day massacre?
Okay. So Medici was a family that ruled in Florence in Italy during the Renaissance. So they, overall, the summary of it is pretty much through uh, patronage of the arts, um, and you know, their humanism sort of, um, they were, they were both wool merchants and bankers. I think that's, that's what it is. I'm, I'm literally looking this up right now. Um, pretty much the families were profitable. Um, they helped fund the Renaissance and commissioned art, um, in the Medici Chapel. Um, a lot of the work was done by, uh, Renaissance artist Michelangelo. Um, I'm trying to see, and then what was the second part, uh, the something massacre?
Yeah. How did their rise to power then lead to the Bartholomew Day massacre?
Okay. Bear with me for a sec. Okay. Bear with me for a second.
Yeah, basically, um, yeah, here we go. I just refound my notes. Um, so basically what it was, it was a, um,
It was an issue of war or peace in the Netherlands. So yeah, um,
Well, yeah, no, the
Yeah, Catherine de Medici carried out, um, I think it was like a war between the Protestants and the Catholics. Yeah. Yeah. So it was, it was a massacre between the two. Um, it was carried out by, okay, so Roman Catholic nobles pretty much, uh, killed a bunch of French Protestants, um, in 1572. Um, that was pretty much what, what started it. So a member of the Medici family was, uh, notably, you know, one of the people that led, uh, the massacre.
Hmm. Yep. So go, uh, sorry, it, for both of us, it's been a while since we've taken AP Euro. That's kind of the one history that we, um, it's been a bit since, since we've taken, so, uh, definitely have to double check our notes for that. Um, it's also new to the Heimler history set of courses. So welcome to everybody who is, um, new here based off the fact that Heimler is doing AP Euro. Um, and here we go, um, let's see, what was significant about Rasputin? Uh, well, if you want the short answer, just listen to the song. Yeah, take for it. I was gonna say the, the easy answer is just listen to the song. That, that tells you all you need to know. Um,
Yeah.
But Styles, go ahead.
Yeah, I would say pre-World War, uh, I won, Rasputin, well, actually even during, because I mean, he died in the middle, right? Um, shortly before the Bolshevik Revolution. Um, if you don't know, Grigory Rasputin was a self-proclaimed Russian Orthodox minister. What that means is pretty much he basically claimed that from the Orthodox Church in Russia, um, he, he was a self-proclaimed minister, uh, so of an official of the church. Uh, but he was also known to be a mystic among the, uh, the Commonwealth. Technically he was a peasant, uh, so he didn't really come from money, but what he tried to do pretty much, um, I mean, he, you could say he was probably, um, a early 20th century gold digger in that sense. Um, he also tried to overthrow the, uh, the Russian government. Um, it was this during the time of the last czar, his czar Nicholas II, uh, that he infiltrated the Russian government. Um, basically czar Nicholas II, uh, I believe it was his youngest son who was dying. And it was that pretty much Rasputin cured him, quote cured him. Um, he also, um, claimed that, you know, this mystic energy was pretty much what the reason that his son was dying and that it could also be saved. Uh, also just to note, a lot of people in the Commonwealth were very, you know, they, they pretty much admired him, right? Whereas people in the government were like, we're wary of this person. He's kind of like basically like invalidating our role as the government. Um, czar Nicholas II pretty much like, you know, was, was very skeptical of this guy's nature. Um, he pretty much had a very, he was not only, um, illegitimate as a, um, a religious leader. He also, you know, profited from it. He also had a promiscuous attitude. So obviously, um, there was that rumor, um, which there, there, there's this, you know, the, a heavy rumor saying that he had, um, a relationship with the queen. Um, pretty much at the end of the day, he, um, they actually tried to assassinate him three different occasions. In one occasion, he was actually, you know, they had a meal with him. Um, and Rasputin was, he had already built up a tolerance to poison, but they threatened to poison him. So when the guy who, um, who was poisoning, uh, his meal, his drink or whatever, um, there was another person at the table who slipped in the antidote and nothing happened. Um, it wouldn't be later until he was actually shot and killed. And then pretty much there was an outcry for that. And you know, obviously that would lead to the Bolshevik Revolution. That was one of the factors, you know, basically, uh, the Commonwealth trying to get back at the government and overthrow them and, you know, create communism in Russia. So yeah.
And again, if you need any help remembering what Rasputin did, just listen to the song. And if not, it's a great song. Just listen to it anyway. Um,
Yeah, that song is definitely good. Yeah.
It is historic, mostly historically accurate, uh, funny enough. Um, anyway, next question here. Uh, was the political shift during the Dershowl Age due to absolute monarchs, realist bourgeoisie, factory owners, something else? Um, I mean, kind of a combination of all of them, really what it, I guess, kind of the main thing that led to it was the, the change of political shift was, uh, yes, the shift away from monarchy and more towards a nation state. Uh, with a, you know, semi-strong government. Um, but also the changing ideas of economics. Uh, instead of people seeing the world as with, if a mercantilistic point of view, where there is just a finite amount of every resource and whoever controls that resource must have the wealth. It's a more capitalist view to the world where, you know, you make things to make money and then trade that for other goods and services. Um, so that's also part of the political shift is the changing, uh, views of economics and of how the world works. So that was also something that led to the, um, to that shift there. Um, yeah, I think that would kind of be the main, the main shifts. Uh, I don't know, Styles, if you have anything else to add for that?
No, none. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Neato. Um, let's see. Um, so actually here, here's, uh, we'll, uh, loop back to Russia real quick. Uh, difference between the Bolsheviks and the Mensheviks. Styles, if you want to take that?
Yeah. So pretty much the, uh, the difference between the Bolsheviks, so they were both, um, groups of people in Russia. Um, pretty much so, if you know what the Bolshevik Revolution is, obviously they were the people that, um, believed in a radical and elitist, um, terms of revolution. Whereas, you know, their opposition sort of, um, Mensheviks basically supported a more progressive change in collaboration with the middle class and the bourgeoisie. Um, the main people on the Menshevik side, uh, were Julius Martov, um, and obviously the Bolshevik leader was Vladimir Lenin. Obviously we know who won because Lenin became, you know, a very iconic leader and Joseph Stalin became his first dictator. So, um, you know, in the, in that sense, you know, it was just these two rivaling factions who had very different views on how to reform the government, but one of them won in the end.
Alrighty, there you go. Uh, next question here asks, what was the Thermidorian reaction? That's a fun thing to say. Uh, basically what that was, it was the time period between the, uh, ousting of Maximilian Robespierre on the 9th of Thermidor. And then the inauguration of the French Directory, uh, a few months later. Uh, reason again, what's called the Thermidorian reaction, uh, was because it happened during the month of Thermidor, which was used during the, uh, it's a month in the French Republic calendar, uh, that translates, uh, to the 27th of July, 1794. Um, and then this is basically kind of the year between the ousting of Maximilian Robespierre and the inauguration of the French Directory, um, a year later in November of 1795. Um, it basically signaled the end of the reign of terror, um, the decentralization of the executive powers. And a turn from Jacobean politics to more Mont, to, oh, sorry, yes. Jacobean politics, um, to more conservative, uh, position, more conservative, um, politics within France. It's kind of like the in-between period between, uh, the rule of Maximilian, uh, Robespierre and the, uh, inauguration of the French Directory.
All right. So I think around this time, usually we have a few volunteers who raise their hands, uh, to come to the stage. So if anybody has a question regarding AP World or AP Euro, uh, first person to raise their hand, uh, yeah.
All right. Oh, we already got a
All right. I think we got Woody. Yeah.
Yep, let's see. Hello, what is your question?
I have a quick question on memorizing the overall content for the EP World exam. So usually what I do is I rewrite like the mains, like packs of like the units and then I put them on the, onto flashcards and then I memorize the flashcards. And I was wondering, is that like effective enough for like, to like get down to content?
So obviously each person has their own way of approaching the content. So I'm not going to say there's like, there's a right way to do it. There's a wrong way to do it. So whatever works best for you, keep doing that. Um, I will say though, just overall content wise, it's more important to understand general trends and tendencies that are going on during the different time period rather than like specific, you know, nitty gritty facts about stuff, you know, knowing, okay, where's the influence in the, like, who holds influence in the world, what kind of trade is going on? What kind of technologies are being developed? Those are kind of the main important things to know. Uh, because you'll be asked for a lot of the questions in order to, um, you know, you'll be asked in a lot of the questions kind of to like compare and contrast, especially for the written questions, to like compare and contrast from one time period to another time period or to explain why one of the empires came to power during that particular time period. Um, but yeah, in terms of like how to actually study for it, uh, you know, to each their own. If flashcards works best for you, then keep going with flashcards. Um, you can, you know, with AP Classroom, it's a great free resource that you can use. You can, um, access practice questions for both multiple choice, DBQ and LEQ. If you don't, uh, see any of those uh, questions available, you can ask your teacher to unlock them. Uh, you can do practice questions from your textbook. You can watch the Heimler review videos, which I think are all really great. I mean, I use those to prepare for my exams. Um, you can look into getting the ultimate review packet if you want. There's some great, uh, questions there. Uh, as well to practice, but yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, to each their own when it comes to, to studying. So I would say there's
Quick question.
Sure, go for it.
Um, for the DBQ, the context and the analyzation, like how do I like make sure the context is right? Because every time I've done a DBQ, he always says like, there's not enough context, but I don't want to like overload with, like with the context. So for the analysis?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the analysis part, so we connected back to the prompts and do we like re-explain how it connects to the prompt?
Yeah. So, um, you mind if I take this one, Josh?
Yep, go for it.
Yeah. So in that case, um, contextualization, what I, um, usually did, um, was pretty much, um, contextualization, usually you cannot talk about the time period that the prompt states. So it's like, say if it's talking about, um, say if I'm taking US history, for example, you know, uh, post 1865, but pre like 1891. So we're talking about like the reconstruction to the Galden Age, right? Uh, shortly before 1900. So say if that's the period, I can talk about like the civil war and like, you know, stuff that happened before. Um, I can use that as contextualization or I can talk about stuff that, you know, was affected by it, but I can't talk about anything that I talk about within the time period. Even, um, usually if you're talking about stuff within the time period, sometimes, uh, that's okay, depending on what it is. It just can't be in anything about your examples in your body paragraphs or anything later in the document. Um, so pretty much if you're talking about contextualization, the best thing to do is start maybe a few years before the event that happened. Or if you're discussing events that happened during the time period, make sure they're not in relation to anything that happened in, uh, any of the documents or anything that you will talk about beyond the documents in your essay. That's an easy way of doing it and for sure you will get that point.
So, so like, like the buildup?
Yeah, yeah. That's pretty much what, what it is. Pretty much. Yeah.
Okay. And then for the analysis?
Uh, for the analysis, you just want to make sure that when discussing your evidence, you're not just kind of like, just like blurring out examples. You want to make sure that, um, uh, those examples tie into why your thesis is important, which is the role of the commentary in your analysis. Your analysis is definitely going to be probably, um, the most crucial part of your essay besides your co, uh, besides your, um, uh, thesis. Uh, so if you get your thesis right, which is probably the main point that you probably get first, uh, your commentary should base itself off of the examples that are mentioned in the documents, you know, whether they're, you know, quotes, um, pieces of art, political cartoons or anything like that. Make sure that you're discussing why these events are important, how they are relevant to the course itself and why they are relevant to history today. And then, you know, like in relation between other countries. Um, that's pretty much all I have. Yeah. Anything else to add, Josh?
Nope, that's pretty much it. Everything.
So you, oh no, oh. You want us to make sure that it's relevant to the prompts, how it relates to the current?
Yeah, like if you're able to, uh, reference like how it, like if you're talking about examples and whatnot, you're grouping the documents into paragraphs kind of. So like I may say like documents A, C and F are relevant, uh, for the prompt, whereas like, you know, B, um, D and E, you know, maybe talking about something else. And then I might have G as a, as a different, because there are seven documents. I usually work with seven just in case if I miss one, because you're, you're supposed to have six documents in order to get at least, you know, a perfect score. Uh, but you know, from time to time you may have essays that, you know, miss a document, you know, that's kind of points, um, that, that may cost you. Um, but the best thing to do is make sure that, you know, you're able to group the documents by certain characteristics, whether they are, you know, political, social, economic, environmental, anything like that. Um, technological even, um, and just be able to talk about the relations between the documents, why they're important, how do they differ from each other? And why they're important to the context of the, you know, the course and history that you're talking about. In this case, obviously AP Euro and AP World History. So yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. I think we have time for a few more questions, don't we think, Josh?
Yeah, let's see. Oh, wow. Already got a bunch of hands up here. Okay. Yeah, I got it. Yep.
Yeah.
Hey, hello, what is your question?
Hello, um, for, this is for AP Euro. Um, so I, I noticed that many of the, especially in the first few units, many of the, uh, significant events overlap, like the, the Renaissance, the Age of Exploration, the Scientific Revolution and, uh, the Protestant Reformation. Um, I just wanted to know how they all connect to each other and how they influence each other. Cause I haven't really learned, uh, they, I've learned them separately and it doesn't seem like there's a, you know, a strong connection between all of them.
Ooh, okay. So remind me, that was, you said the Renaissance and Protestant Reformation. And what were the other ones?
The Scientific Revolution and the Age of Exploration.
Age of Exploration. Oof. Okay. So a lot of stuff here. Um, yeah, I guess you could also throw the Enlightenment in there as well. That's kind of important. But basically all, all, what a lot of those have in common is the shift away from religion being the strong, um, I guess kind of backbone of, of European society and shifting more towards individual intellect, individual exploration, letting kind of the mind free flow, having free will, free choice to do stuff, not necessarily be held in to what the church tells you to do or what, you know, your respective religion tells you to do. But for a lot of people in Europe, it was, uh, the Catholic Church. Um, I guess that is, that is, could be the, the main connector between all of the, um, all, all of the events is that they, um, are shifts from the kind of older medieval way of thinking, if you will, of, you know, what the church says is right and we must do exactly what the church says to having more individual rights, individual freedoms, being able to think for one's own, being able to explore on one's own, develop one's own ideas, kind of having that better sense of, of self. So that's how I would go about connecting all those different things together is kind of shift from kind of group, uh, mindset of doing what the church says to do to individuals being like, you know, I'm able to explore and do things on my own and think for my own, and I don't need some big church to tell me what to do or think.
But do they influence each other in any way since they're sort of happening at the same time and in the same place?
Um, I mean, and say to some extent, I mean,
Yeah, I would say it depends. Yeah.
Because sorry, I mean, I, yeah, I just wanted to say like, you have to remember communication then was not the greatest. Um, like you can have things that are going on like in very close parts of the world, but just because you know, communication wasn't really the greatest, like the fastest way you're going to get something to anybody is writing a letter on horse, which could take, uh, you know, from like a week to a month to get anywhere. Uh, so the sharing of information was not as widespread as, um, it is today. So, I mean, yes, they're probably, there were like some influences between those different movements, but a lot of them occurred independently. Just because the web of communication that we have today and that exists in many parts of the world just did not exist during this time period. Do you have Styles, anything you wanted to add for that?
Yeah, I would definitely say like, be sure, like, I mean, even, even the question that I answered before about the DBQ and like how to like reference things. It's, it's like I said, uh, these courses are very formulaic. So even on like, you know, reviewing content and stuff, um, pretty much what you have to do is, um, talk about like, you know, if you're talking about the Scientific Revolution versus, you know, like the Protestant Reformation. Or like talking about like certain like events that have to do with each other or were opposing each other. Obviously, you know, the Scientific Revolution, there are people in the church that kind of oppose that. Um, obviously you have the founding of Lutheran Church by Martin Luther. Um, so certain events like that kind of contributed to like, you know, the backlash from the Catholic Church at that time. Obviously the Catholic Church reformed itself to what it is today. So obviously that corruption isn't there right now. Obviously with, um, uh, the absolution by paying your way out of hell, um, the, um, I forgot what the term was called. Um, does anybody know? Uh, it was basically where, um, a priest, like during a confession, basically, um, during that time before Martin Luther, um,
Indulgence.
Uh, indulgences, that's what it was. Yeah. The indulgence period. Uh, so pretty much like, you know, stopping all that. Um, the Renaissance also brought, you know, great change. Uh, Renaissance is, you know, a rebirth as, as many people know. Um, it was a time of reformation. It was a time of self-discovery for philosophical, political and scientific developments. And those continuously are, you know, they're over a course of, you know, how many, you know, hundred years. So that's why the events, you know, tend to overlap each other, because you know, that enlightenment led to industrialization, which is in the later units. So yeah. So you, you could just reference like, you know, the events, how they were affecting each other. European history is very, um, I would say it's a very, um, So yeah, you, you could just reference like, you know, the events, how they were affecting each other. European history is very, um, I would say it's a very um, it's a very confusing course in, in, you know, how like, you know, they overlap. But I would say once you understand like why certain events affected others, I would say you're pretty much, you know, uh, guaranteed to do well in the test.
Alright, thank you.
No problem. Uh, we'll take one more voice question. Oops, sorry, I think I um, I kicked Stiles off. Where'd he go? Um, okay, he's back, okay. Uh, so we got time for one more question. Yes, what is your question?
Hi, so I have a question on basically like, um, for AP World and like AP Euro in general. So, what were like some study resources or any tips that you guys may have for any like AP history courses?
Great question. Uh, so as I mentioned earlier, there is really no right or wrong way to study. Each person studies differently. So, for me, um, I just, I really enjoyed history, so it was really easy for me to just absorb all the material. Um, pre-exam, I would go ahead and just review my notes, uh, re-watch the unit recap videos uh, that Heimler's made. And basically how it works is if I uh, didn't understand anything uh, that was mentioned, or if like I couldn't, if I could not summarize it within a couple of sentences, like just off the top of my head, I'd go back in my notes and double-check that, make sure I knew it, and then keep watching the video. Um, and you know, really made sure I understand those key topics, because for the most part, what Heimler mentions in those unit review videos are basically what you're gonna be tested on in the exam. And if like, for some reason they ask you something that's like not mentioned in those unit review videos, you can usually get by, by referencing those things that were mentioned and trying to tie it as much as you can to the topic that is asked. Um, but again, there is no right or wrong way to study. Like, if for you, typically, it's better for you to um, like make flashcards and go off the flashcards. If it's better for you to do a lot of practice questions, so you're used to answering the questions, um, and kind of knowing what to expect going in. Um, for some people, they're just better off like doing nothing, just, you know, attending your lectures, doing the works, uh, and then showing up for the exam, like that works for some people. So, again, there really is no right or wrong way to study, but I would say just at least, at a very minimum, have an idea of what the question style is gonna look like. So, you know, do, do some MCQ, do some DBQ, do some LACs, um, and then SAQs if that's on your exam. Um, but you know, just doing a couple of those, just so you know how those questions work, what they look like. Make sure that you're timing yourself, making sure you're doing it within the time limit. And then just, uh, again, on the content side of things, doing whatever's gonna work best for you for remembering content, whether that's uh, making yourself flashcards, whether that's reviewing your notes, whether that's watching Heimler's uh, review videos, anything like that uh, to help you remember. So, I know it's not necessarily the greatest answer, um, but that's, that, that's what, what I would say. That's kind of what worked for me. Um, but again, to each their own. I don't wanna say that, oh, this is the right way to study, because I know not everybody's brains work the same. And you know, what, what, what works for one person might not necessarily work for someone else.
Okay, and one other question for AP World, um, in terms of industrialization, other than knowing like the causes, effects, and like the worker conditions, and kind of the Enlightenment deals it led to for the workers. Um, what would you say is another like main part of industrialization? Like, do we need to know any specific details about like, how different countries led industrialization, other than like Japan and Russia?
I would probably say, um, you know, in, in industrialization mainly in Europe. Obviously, if you reference, you know, the world wars, you know, industrialization helped the war effort, you know, mass production, you know, on both sides. I mean, uh, for Nazi Germany, Hitler was able to map his planes in order to form the Luftwaffe, right? Uh, the uh, the Nazi German air force. Um, for Britain, you know, they were able to mobilize uh, their efforts in order to make it way, make their way to the mainland, right? So I mean, like, you know, in, in that sense, you know, it, both like, you know, in technological and industrial efforts, um, you know, they helped the, the war effort. Uh, you could also say they um, they invented new information technology, I mean, both in America and in Europe. I mean, you had like, you know, systems like uh, the Telegram system, uh, so people could send messages, uh. I mean, that, that's kind of it. I mean, like in that sense, because I mean, during, during industrialization, there were two things. It was mass production, um, and then how that mass production helped the effort during, um, you know, the wars that were happening. Um, it wouldn't be until like probably the nineteen fifties or sixties, obviously, like, you know, when those wars ended, that, you know, it was like, um, you know, when you had Russia, um, and the US, you know, kind of battling it out in silence, basically during the Cold War, uh, you wouldn't um, see much war effort until obviously Korea. Um, but that was a US intervention, not a European one. So, um, you know, there, there would still be technological innovation, but it wouldn't be as prevalent in war effort um, as it was in the World War, period.
Okay, just another quick question, I'm sorry. So, um, if we were to do a contextualization for, uh, for example, like decolonization, um, would, uh, could I like talk about how uh, empires started becoming like polit- politically um, unaccepted? And people didn't really support any empires and the increase, um, the increasing nationalism of the colonies kind of led to either peaceful negotiations or violence? Like, would that work as a contextualization?
Um, I think it should. Stiles, what do you think about that? Stiles.
Sorry, what was that?
Yes, um, yeah, if you wouldn't mind repeating that again?
Yeah, so, um, for contextualization for the topic of decolonization. Um, if I said, so during, um, after the wars, um, empires started becoming politically unaccepted and the colonies started increasing their um, nationalism, which led to either peaceful negotiations of decolonization or aggressive and violent means. So, would that like flow as a good contextualization, as a general one, not like a specific one?
I would say it kind of depends on what area you're talking about, because like, you know, um, colonization kind of varies. Um, if you're talking about Europe, Europe is definitely like, you know, the continent with the least amount of it. Obviously, you know, like that, that's because, you know, most, the most powerful uh, nations throughout history, you know, they've, they've been, you know, the most like in terms of quantity, um, you know, with uh, they, they've been in Europe. I mean, you had the Roman Empire, and you know, pretty much everything that came after. I mean, you had like, you know, the Nazi Germans, you had the fascist Italians. Um, so I mean, and, and you had France as well, so I mean, like, uh, you gotta keep, uh, think about it this way. So, in terms of colonization, I, I would say it depends on the area you're talking about. Uh, if we're talking about um, Nazi Germany and, and for that example, you know, the colonization uh, was eventually stopped because, you know, Germany was eradicated in that war. Um, you know, they had to reform their government and, you know, get rid of all the fascists that were in there. Obviously, the Nuremberg Trials um, addressed, you know, the issues with uh, the Holocaust and like, you know, the atrocities that, you know, occurred in those camps. Um, I would say obviously, you know, just reiterating again, it just depends on what event you're talking about. You know, uh, European history spans a wide margin of hundreds of years. You know, we're talking about from the um, the late fifteenth century all the way until the present. Um, so, you know, there's a wide variety of, of uh, examples that I can mention. Uh, obviously, I can't really mention all of them at once right now, because, you know, we're kind of short on time. Uh, but I would say at the end of the day, um, just make sure that you're able to talk about the colonization efforts. Um, if it's in your textbook or if it's in Heimler's videos, definitely make note of how it affected uh, not only the standard of the country, but if there was a minor power involved, you know, as you said, talk about how they were affected. I mean, obviously, like Russia had many other, like, I mean, uh, you had Cuba, for example. That was technically sort of a, not really a colony, but they were affected by Russia um, in, in such a drastic way, you know, because of their acceptance of communism. So I mean, like in that sense. Uh, but other than that, I mean, like, you know, make sure that you're referencing uh, the right source material and you're kind of fact-checking, I would say.
Okay, um, so we are actually out of time. It's just on the mark here. Uh, we'll briefly go over what you can, um, or how to approach different styles of questions. Uh, that's how we'll conclude every session, just so that everybody kind of has an idea of, you know, how to approach different styles of questions, because that's a question that we get a lot of times. For multiple choice questions, you'll have a range of four to five uh, different possible answers that you can choose from. Uh, there'll be some questions where it'll be really obvious with the correct choices, you don't even have to think about it. But for the ones where, you know, there might be uh, two or three correct options. Uh, for those, the way that they try to get you is they will either have one of the correct answers is in the wrong time period or in the wrong context based off the question, or the wrong answer has something wrong about the event. Either there is something that has been switched. Um, you know, like one country ends up winning over another when the opposite happened, or one person got elected and another person didn't when the opposite happened. Um, so again, for that, just try, just really try to remember what's going on in the uh, in the world during that time period. Um, make sure you really understand what the question is asking. As uh, contextualization is very important for these questions, to make sure that you understand what is going on. Uh, that's how I would best approach it. Again, best way to get better at it is to do a lot of practice. Um, also remember that they're not gonna try to like pull a gotcha on you, pull a fast one on you. They were, they're gonna be asking you questions, like, whatever they are asking you is, in the question is exactly how you should be answering it. It's gonna be like very literal, they don't try to play mind games with you, just answer the question, literally what you are asked, don't try to overthink it or anything like that. Um, when it comes to the DBQ, um, there is no right or wrong answer. Um, there, it's all based on your approach, just make sure that you are following the rubric, that you're hitting all those main points of the rubric. Uh, try to develop an argument going in, start grouping documents, uh, you know, on like a scratch paper. You can um, mark down how you wanna order things, what kind of arguments that you wanna do. Um, and all that, make sure you try to get an argument set up before you do it, so that in the case that, you know, you're running short on time, you can just quick try to write it in, try to get as many points as possible. Again, remember, you can't lose points, you can only gain points. So try to um, include as much as you can in your answer. Um, and then for the LEQ, again, try to format your answer before you start writing. Try to just jot down your main points, main arguments that you wanna make. Um, and have it so that, again, if you do run low on time, you can at least just quickly jot down what your outline was of some of your main points, and at least try to get as many of those points as you can from that answer. As always, best way to improve is to do practice. So in the days leading up to your exam, definitely take some time and make sure to practice it. Is that you know what to expect and to do as well as you can on those style of questions. With that being said, we've reached the end of this study session. Uh, the session has been recorded and will be available in the study session channel uh, within the next day or so. So keep a lookout for that in case you wanna listen back to any part of it or didn't catch something that we mentioned. We'll be doing another one of these next week. Go ahead, check out the calendar in the study session channel, as well as the events calendar. Those will have all the events listed in your local time zones, no need to do any conversions, just look at the time and show up uh, when the session is supposed to start. If we did not get to any of your questions today, uh, very sorry about that. We will try to get to them during the next session. That is all that we have for this evening. Hope everybody have a great rest of their evening and a great weekend. We'll see y'all next week. Have a good one.